So I'll call the Planning and Zonic Commission regular meeting to order. We'll start in Minnesota, we'll call Alzona.
Here.
Michael Kane.
Not here.
So so.
Stay.
Yes. Our regular members are here and have a form. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the S P E C three eighty D V C C A childcare and preschool center. Here, finally applicant and then the town staff with their presentation, then any comments from the public. There is.
Right after everything.
And actually isn't really known. And also, we have to be careful and you cannot receive any additional information after a public hearing is closed. So how will read the news? So notice.
Notices hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. It's community room two town hall annex one, three, four, Groton, One Point Road, and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Special permit in the three eight zero at thirty-six and thirty-eight Central Avenue, Diane, one, six, nine, eight, one, two, nine, six, one, eight, one, five, E, R twelve zone. Proposal is to demolish two existing structures and construct a new twenty-three thousand square foot child daycare center. You view as per sections five point one dash four point B and nine point four of the zoning regulations. E V C C A applicant town of Groton owner. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website meetings calendar. Applications are in file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department one, three, four, Groton, One Point Road, Groton, Connecticut. Day to this thirtieth day of June, twenty twenty-three, Groton, Connecticut.
It's the applicant was. Like to make their presentation.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Monahan, and I am the CEO of TV CCA. So first and foremost, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak in front of you. I want to give you a little history, quick history here for over fifty years. TV CCA has had a childcare program in the town of Groton at this site. For most of those fifty years, it was a head start program. And back in two thousand and nine, we added a state funded early childhood program so that now there's actually three programs that operate there. Head Start, Early Head Start, and Early Childhood funded by the state of Connecticut. Over the last fifty years, we've had a great relationship with the town of Groton. As you're aware, currently, the town of Groton owns the buildings. And TV CCA leases them from from the town. In nineteen ninety-one, the town secured funding to replace the original buildings that were there back in the early seventies. And over the years, we have done a lot of improvements and maintenance to those. And we have leases currently in place for those three buildings through twenty twenty-five. One of the buildings was originally a substation that we've converted to a twenty child classroom. The other two buildings were constructed, as I said, in nineteen ninety-one for kids. But right now, they're they're really outdated for children. And as you're probably aware, with people coming back to work with electric boat expanding their workforce, childcare is in great demand. And so that's the reason why we're seeking to demolish the two buildings thirty-six, thirty-eight and construct a new state of the art childcare facility. We hope to expand the number of children that we serve currently to one fifty. So currently at the site, there's eighty-six children. Sixteen of those are infant toddler and the remaining are three to five year olds preschoolers. We hope to expand that to a hundred and fifty children at that site. We have waiting lists primarily because of the fact that people need reliable, affordable childcare so they can go to work. We feel that the use that we're recommending is compatible with what we're currently doing there. It's just at an expanded footprint. And we hope that you will vote favorably for us moving forward. We have reached out to parents to see what their support was, and they're, of course, overwhelmingly supportive of having a new facility and an expanded facility. As I said, we have waiting lists, particularly we have waiting lists for the infant toddlers. Right now, there's only sixteen, those infant toddler slots will go up to approximately between fifty and sixty. And the reason I say between fifty and sixty is because currently there's eight in a classroom, but the state is looking to maybe increase that to ten infant toddlers. So we could potentially have sixty infant toddlers that that's where the great demand is. In closing, we at TV CCA are committed to high quality early childhood, not only to help the parents, but also to get the kids ready for school. I've been the CEO of TV CCA for over twenty-five years. And in those twenty-five years, we've constructed two other large childcare facilities, one in Norwich and one in New London. And I think it's time for Groton to have exactly what those other two towns have. So again, I'm hoping that you'll vote favorably on this. Now, if there's any questions.
I would staff like unless you have somebody else to present.
I think they have other people.
Look, you might have those.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chuck Mandel, agent for the applicant Stevens and Associates Civil Engineer Land Surveyors. I'm not going to give much of a speech, but Paul, could you get the site, the site plan, I'm sorry, Leo. So you know these. So as you can see, these are the three buildings, this is the site there. Surrounded by residential properties. We have what's on Central Avenue and Midway Oval. We will be keeping the existing daycare, we call it building number three on this plan. The two other buildings, building one and two demolished. We're going to do this in phases, essentially cut the site on some path and construct the to the north. We will be meeting all the requirements for parking. There's, as Deb had mentioned, there're going to be forty-seven staff members. And building number three, which we're keeping will be for administrative personnel, it'll be ten in there, a total of fifty-seven employees. There're going to be a hundred and fifty students, so we've provided adequate parking. It's one space per employee and it's there's a ratio of let's see. It's one parking spot where we tend students. So we do have a total is seventy-two required, we'll be having seventy-five parking spaces provided. We will also incorporate it in that parking, we're going to have electric vehicle parking. We're going to be having nine active EV parkings and eleven that will be made ready for if there's a larger demand for that. And that we two twenty volts, it varies, they call it stage two, but there is different classes of EV, one, two, and three, we'll be having two, which is the most common commercial sites. We'll also be providing stormwater maintenance. You can see by those gray areas, those are the detention basins. That capturing and treating all the stormwater currently, there's no stormwater treatment on the site. Also provided for those little circles in there, those are actually going to be geothermal wells. So the entire site's going to be electric using the geothermal walls for all can be protected. That involved more discussed that. The parking flow will be coming from the southern parking area. Far that we drop off across the line, there's also a good parking at night. There's or the parents will have to park and and bring the children to the site. So there'll be a flow of from the south to the morning. We've had also an extensive landscaping plan, we'll be needing the buffer requirements. There is one small section of the rain garden, approximately fourteen hundred square feet of the northern edge. We will have extensive planting plan. We could have provisions, we could move that completely out of the twenty-five foot bunker if needed. But then again, then we get into more subsurface retention. That's the box right there. So that's for store where retention is more expensive and more infrastructure, more maintenance in order to have that in place. So we will be having a buffer along the north edge of that. Actually, I scaled today, the closest residence across the street is about ninety feet away from the buffer area. We also leave that sheet. So also here. These little squares are actually playground playground areas. We require seventy-five square feet per child, so twenty children could play at one time. So that'd be a total of a hundred and ten children could be outside at once if need be. I don't think that's all going to happen all at one time, but there is actually a play area where the children, you can see the surrounding. Those are all the structures that was from the G I S from block. There's adequate sewer, adequate electric and water. We did contact the fire department. There was no requirement for an additional hydrant on site. We also contacted Ledge Light Health District, and we're in the process of getting approvals for the initial hookups for that. And also here. Parking detention basins, playgrounds. And that's pretty much it for we do in keeping with the neighborhood. I haven't heard any complaints from any of the neighbors. We were out there surveying, ran into several neighbors. No one commented on it, and in fact, we did notify all the adjoiners. Deborah has all the information for the adjoiner notifications. And in fact, we held two Zoom meetings, contacted the neighborhood, not only the residents who are living there, but also the owners of the properties. Just a lot of these are rentals out there, and no one showed up, no one contacted us at all. So there were no, there was very no opposition at all. I would say they're all in favor of that. And that's pretty much it. And I'll let Paul talk a little bit, and then if you have any questions at the end of the presentation, we'll answer any questions. Plus he wants.
No. No, I continue as your.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Paul Jorgensen with Silver Petri Cellar Architects, project manager for the project. The images we're looking at are the drawings that were submitted to Planning and Zone. And so we just want to go through quickly. These are the remainder of the drawings. We have drainage drawings that Chuck talked about in details already worked out for that. We have landscape plans, planting details, demolition, taking out some of the existing. And then full landscape plan, which is keeping the buffers on the the south and east of property and then adding the tree. The street trees along Midway and also supplementing on central. For the architecture, which is what I know best, this is the floor plan, proposed floor plan. And what you're looking at is something that was took time to develop with TV CCA. We really dove deep into their program to find out what spaces they needed. And I can walk you through the plan. The main entrance is at the top of the center wing. Manager's here, we have a reader area, we have a nurse or a health speed at the top, we have small conference rooms. A manager's office, then we have a large area for office, a work space, a sport staff, for the touchdown spaces that they could work here. We have staff closets and center, though, and we have mechanical electrical spaces and material area coming through this part of the site. The way the plan is structured is infant toddler rooms are on one end of the building, there are six infant toddler rooms. Then we have classrooms on the south side. We have a small warm intention for the program. And then in center, we have some specialty spaces, we have the most modest fields, I think they are beautiful. We have a divider, and so those spaces could be divided or opened up for the staff. As you know, there are a lot of doorways out of the building. These connect directly to the playgrounds. So we have playgrounds in quadrant, but we're going essentially across the back and the front two quarters. The building, as you see, has each classroom has its own dedicated storage and facilities, and these are for the youngest kids. This obviously, we have a revision of the sack. You also have some dedicated rooms for place storage, playground storage for outside use, and also some toilet facilities. And so the staff don't have to burden the children back into the building. Elevations have been worked out for the building. We will try to try to keep the the building, the scale of the building and the materials of the building in keeping with the so we're looking at a fiber cement siding that's painted siding with a wind scope base. We're looking at a shingle roof, multiple shingle roofs in this case, and that was part of keeping the scale of the building down. The roofs are not connected roofs, so we have center, the building has its own digital and solar pitch. And then the wings do not connect in, they're connected by the old flaps. Internal bridge. I have other images of the renderings we did, which are larger, and I've been bringing those up. But this was what was submitted to planning zones. You can see the main entrance here from the parking. This is another image of a as you enter the parking lot, back in the building. Would that may be coming through. The play areas are in progress right now, they're not fully designed yet because they don't need to be until closer to the end of the project. But as Chuck was saying, we have the required sizes for each of the play areas. Again, the play areas are come you come right out of the class, you break into this exterior corridor essentially that feed into individual playgrounds. In that way, it gives some flexibility where a classroom here could use any of these three, which will have different types of equipment that could be used by the classrooms and shared, they could go to one or the other. We have signage details for the project. We have the photo metric plan done by the electrical engineer. And this is a simplified version because we needed to see all the light levels on the fence. We took the trees, but it was coordinated with the landscape planning. And then, of course, talking about the EV charging, we're now showing a side of the building, also some this first part, and then we're getting this whole second open or drop on. So that is those are the drawings and I'm sure you're next. And this is the scale of the neighborhood just right down the street on the way oval going toward the site. And then this is a larger rendering of that front entrance way. So again, this was an early image, so that has changed slightly. And you see that in the elevations, we did originally consider having this. But now it's been changed to a typical siding base. So we have a siding that picks up that same profile, but it's stuck to the rest of the fibers from inside. The color scheme has been worked out. The sign is just a little smaller now based on planning standards. And you can see the doors. The fencing for the playgrounds in the front is more decorative steel picket type fence. On the back of the building, we're using a coated chain fence for the entire areas. And again, this rendering was done prior to the playground equipment being selected. And this is an example of one of those play areas. And again, we're still in working on the design with the playground designer for the materials that themselves partially on the raw surfaces and the things that fencing for each of the play. Using some examples of the images that will be developed right now. So if there are any questions, that's the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. I am, all right. Thank you. So this this is a public hearing for a special permanent application. The mailings are in order. You may be wondering why all of those slides were not in your packet. And that is because all of those slides are for the site plan. You're not dealing with the site plan tonight. It is only the special permit application. So childcare centers of twenty children or more are allowed in the R zone by special permit, provided they meet the conditions. There are five conditions associated with childcare centers in the R zone. Those include the size of the play area, which is key to the number of children that may be using it at any one time and and play equipment. And that what they're showing here does satisfy that requirement. Building setbacks, it has to be set back fifty feet from property lines as opposed to what the normal setbacks are for this zone. Buffers, they are required to have buffers along the areas that are used for childcare. So not along the parking lot, but along, you know, the play areas. It's a buffer area of twenty-five feet. At this point, it is likely to be vegetation. But when you see the site plan, there may be some areas where they have to make some adjustments. We're still in the process of working that out. They have to demonstrate that there is safe pedestrian and vehicle access. So they've talked about how the the parents will drop off students and where the parking is right in front where the the main entrance to the site is. And then they also have to have state licensing. So we will likely review the site plan in August. It's a fairly complicated site plan because of the phasing and getting all of the details right. And that's why that's why you're not seeing it tonight like we normally do.
So anyone in the public wish to address this question?
Online, to raise their hand.
We have one, then we'll turn it over to the commissioners for their comments. I'll start with you.
Okay. Back up and just thinking about this, it's just for the special permit, it's just nothing else. And I have absolutely no problem with anything about this. I think this is long overdue. The only thing that's close to the size is the subbase, I believe. It's a long way to there and considering how many houses are around it, this is terrific. Yeah, I don't have any questions, it looks to me.
Well, I don't have any questions either. I was a deep supporter of this. My daughter started a year and a quarter and went on to grade schools. I think it's so important.
No questions, again, maybe someone with site plan.
Yeah. Questions. Right, yeah. Yeah, I have no concern. Questions. Because I can say it's all.
Right.
Site plan.
It is, it's just to land this.
I think they use. This is a good use. I'll need.
It is, and certainly fits in with the neighborhood. Neighbors are just having a childcare facility there and so they.
Does a applicant have any problems opposing? Okay, is it staff? Is anyone on the commission? They'll probably give us even more information, then I'll make a motion and to close the the public hearing for the S P E C three eighty D V C C A childcare.
Second.
Movement second, Steve. There was anyone having any questions on this? Ms. Heans, the motion, they will vote on on the motion to post public hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. So we'll move on to the next item, which is consideration of public hearings for spec three eighty D V C C A. We have a motion that was passed out to us. Does anybody have a problem with the motion? I assume the applicant has seen the motion, there's no concerns. We have none, and I'll make a motion to approve special permit three eighty TV C C A childcare and preschool thirty-six to thirty-eight Central Avenue to demolish two existing structures and construct a new twenty-three thousand square foot child daycare center serving up to a hundred and fifty children subject to the following condition. One, a buffer of twenty-five feet in width shall be provided in accordance with section eight point one dash six, the buffer shall be applied to the portion of the site dedicated the child care use. Findings and reasons for approval. Commission finds that this application is conditioned, complies in zoning regulation section five point one dash four point three childcare center. The commission also finds that this application complies with a special permit criteria in section nine point four dash six of the zoning regulations in that it does not alter the essential characteristics of the area, does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts, and does not conflict with the purposes of these regulations. This is second.
Exactly. Let's see.
Okay, so so his second. Anyone have any concerns with the motion?
Was there a reason why we're reiterating? That's exactly what the rank says, right?
Or the buffer?
Yeah.
Again, it's just about what it says. I just want to make it clear that it wasn't really spelled out on the special permit plan, how they were going to address it. And that is a condition of this, so that's it.
No problem.
Anything else? There are none, then. Other comments, and we'll vote on the the motion to approve the special permit three eighty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, inscriptions, motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Okay, next item we have is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings in June twenty-seven twenty-third minutes. I'll send the motion.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-seven.
Yeah, well, second, second, smooth and second by. Anyone have any corrections?
Just had two editorial page two on the second line says required or should be required or. Yeah, I should have one on page eight ones.
No, I don't remember. You had another one.
Yeah, I thought I did, but I don't know where it is. It was just, you know, oh, here. Plan, oh, page five. Is that paragraph that starts the commission discussed?
And take the form out.
Take the four out there. And then I've only wondered why Commissioners have noted the change of the nearby hotels into apartments. I know we discussed that, there's no other information like that. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter, it's fine. The issue I don't remember. You said it. It was very sort of like out of out of nowhere. That's your quote, that's it.
Yeah. Page one of the meeting minutes. Paraphrase Roman numeral two point one. Commissioners are readily glad, and then it says for the public hearing, just put a space in there. Just put a space in there. Yeah, under public hearings. The word public and hearing are together. Is it, is, is that just? Are they together?
No, yeah. No, I printed it out.
Mine didn't come out that way.
And also after the word letter in the first sentence, they add period, you don't have the space.
Right. I've got that. Yep.
Anyone have anything else? I just have one additional one under. On page six, under reported chair. It has commissioners, I noted the public hearing, that really should come under. That's the report of commission.
Yes, yes.
Does anyone have anything else? Order on the motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-seventh amendment. But if you ever had a meeting where you have a third person. Then we have our public communications. Is anyone on the commission have any communications staff having? And we have this one that gave us. Is that where it belongs? Or it's just for information?
It is just for information. Right now, um, the Grotten Open Space Association is actually making a presentation to the town council. Um, when the, the slide deck was given to the town manager, um, coaches invested, you know, if you think they might be interested, send it through the wetland agency. So, so I put it under communications and place the council wants. For right now, it's.
So our next item, then, uh, the site plans. We have S I T twenty-three oh seven. You can move that.
Union Commission, uh, thank you for having me. My name is.
Thank you.
Um, again, sorry, Seamus Moran, uh, P in Connecticut. I work at engineering associates. Uh, I'm representing the applicant Gary Holbert, who is the handsome man in the second row here, uh, with us tonight for, um. For our application for Friar Tux, which is at twelve Water Street, uh, in Mystic, Connecticut. You probably know Friar Tux. It's in the factory square development factory square, square complex. Uh, in the main building up front along Water Street. It's the southern portion of the building. Um, the northern portion is vacant, soon to not be so vacant. However, so Gary, uh, is the owner and operator of Friar Tux. And we're here before you for a site plan application. For an expansion, uh, to the back for a three season room behind the building. So there are, this site, uh, has a lot of permits, previous permits on the property dating back to nineteen seventy-three. The most appropriate permits that we'll talk about tonight are essentially, uh, four permits that were recently granted. One for the milestone building, which is that vacant complex, the vacant restaurant just north of this in the same building. Uh, that was approved in two thousand twenty-one for an expansion, a thousand and fifty-three square foot expansion, uh, which I'll show you on a different plan. Um, and also some stormwater management improvements in the back of that. That's the reason I bring that up is we have a, a conveying system behind that building. Um, for stormwater management. Um, as well as a, a minor administrative approval for an expansion of the concrete pad for miles. Not a project, but I feel like it's worth mentioning because of what I'll say in a few minutes, um, for Friar Tux. In two thousand twenty, um, the patio in the back of the building was approved, uh, as a first site plan. So the patio that's there now is about fourteen hundred and seventy-five square feet and that was approved in, uh, two thousand twenty. And then in two thousand twenty-two, these storage units, just on the south side of the building. Uh, were approved by administrative approval. So those are the kind of the four, just to get our bearings on what we're looking at tonight. Um, so the, the architect prepared, uh, both the architectural plans and the site plan. And what I prepared was just simply the stormwater management. Um, which I'll get into shortly. Um, so what we're looking to do is, um. You can see from this existing conditions plan, what Mark has shown here is the interior floor plan of the building. This over here is the proposed expansion. It's a three season room that essentially just. We're hosting a twenty-one by twenty-four foot. Three season room on the existing patio in the back of the building, um, and Mark prepared some elevations that I can show you here. Uh, those elevations, what those do is those kind of match the roof line right behind that. So if you're looking at. Back here for a second, if you're looking at. The three season room from essentially the walkway. There's a, there's a, um, I'm sorry, there's a cooler here and a cooler here. And what he's doing is essentially matching those roof lines. As you look at it from the side, so it's almost carrying those roof lines straight across and making it more architectural. Um, so it'll look. Very similar to if you were standing here now, looking at the coolers, but with a much more architectural look to it. So. That is essentially Mark's plans or as much as I can explain in a nutshell. I'm not an architect. I'm not very good at explaining it, but, um. That's what we have for Mark's plans. Um, I think the window units are removable. So in the summer, those panels, the window panels. Can be removed so you can get fresh air in there. Um, in the winter, you can place them back in. So you have more, uh, weather resistant. Surface area, I'm sorry, restaurant area. Lastly, what I'll talk about is the stormwater management and what we did was the. Even though our proposed. Building is. Is, uh, over the existing patio. This here, this darker shaded area, that is the proposed expansion, the proposed three season room. It's over the existing patio. And what we're looking to do is we're going to run gutters along the exterior. To a stormwater trough is what we're calling it. Essentially just a bin that Gary is going to construct on a concrete pad. To, and it's sized to accommodate the one inch storm event. So those that one inch flush, that first storm, we can, where all, most of the constituents are. Uh, we can capture that in this trough, which in elevation view is shown here. That's a spigot on the side of it. So we can connect the hose to it. So you can water plants and water the gardens and, and what he has on the site. Um, there's a pipe internal to that trough. That's set at an elevation that allows any water below it. Is the one inch storm event. Any water above it will, um, will fall into the, into the pipe that's then conveyed out. To the stormwater management system that was approved for the northern half of the site with the milestone approval from twenty twenty-one. Um, so that is how the stormwater management system works. It's fairly simple. Simple reuse of the water, um, the one inch storm event is the one you want to treat for water quality. So that's what we're doing. To, to manage that, uh, and then it can base out, uh, in the storms above the one inch storm event. Um, we have had, uh, of course Deb has helped us along the way, um, with our application process. We also did have comments from Legislite. Uh, Public Works and Fire Marshal and the Fire Marshal, which I believe all of those comments have been addressed. Um, so those have all been addressed at this point. Between myself, um, Gary and Mark Camo, the architect. So I, I believe we are all in order. Um, however, I can pass it off to Deb for any additional comments.
Thank you, Seamus. So I don't have much to add, just to reiterate, there is an existing patio, uh, uh, behind the building. Um, the structure will go over top of the patio. They are not increasing any seats. So there's no increase in parking. Um, Friar Tux will continue to use the validation program that they're already entered into and already have signage for. Fire marshal has, w- was the main agency who had concerns about the building in terms of egress. Um, his concerns have been met. I think that's, that's it. I mean, the stormwater system is what was previously proposed with the restaurant on the north side.
What are the sides of this thing? I understand the roof, which is almost flat roof from actual grain. Uh, just wondering how. I guess now you're going to sort of enclose it somehow. And I'm just wondering what that is.
I believe that during the summer, these panels here, um, will be removed. So these. All the windows here that you see actually are, I think it's.
Well, they had like, uh, garage doors and, um. This is not, this is.
I think what we're looking at here in the first heat is south elevation seasonal. In, so I've seen on two panel in and the second. Here are again.
I have, I have no problem with this. I'm just pointing, when is a building out of building? At what point is this? Looks like nothing to me. So as an addition, uh, doesn't increase, increase anything, so. Does anything else kick in? But maybe that's the problem with the fire marshal. I had to say it's, it's, it's a building as far as he's concerned. But as far as we're concerned, uh, do we care?
I mean, in terms of seating, it's exactly the same. It's the, uh, they're just covering it and you know, there may be a little bit less noise in the.
This thing just tucks underneath that big tree.
Um, the question was, you mentioned about this stormwater being collected so it could be used elsewhere on the site. Look, is that mechanism work? Is there a, sort of tanks in place or what?
So what, what you're going to construct is this trough that will sit on a concrete pad. The trough is a two and a half feet wide by three feet tall by nine and a half feet long. It will sit on this back wall. Um, and we signed that trough.
This is actually some true below the level one. Elevate. Hide, hide it somehow. But it's, but most systems are down. This one's sitting on top of it. The plants on top, which are okay. Bring your horses up there. All right.
I guess it. Uh, that's it. What is the difference? Going back to that same three season thing. Uh, if someone puts in, uh, I mean, will there be like propane portable heaters allowed in there? How do you make something three seasons? I'm just wondering like, because it, how, does that affect what we're doing? When someone says three.
I mean, this is essentially an addition, right?
So they could use it for four seasons.
Since he's talking about winter, what's three seasons are. But, but, but it's a building. It's a building addition.
So are they allowed to heat it?
Yeah, yeah, they can. I mean, this, they could have called it an addition to Friar Tux. They called their application.
Okay, season room. All right, that's fine. It's just, it doesn't affect our parking or.
Not at all.
Three quarters. No questions. So I mean, essentially though, this could become. Full.
It's an addition.
Addition and use that way, right?
The fourth season is center time.
Right now, there's no provision for ventilation. That, that's probably, that's probably the only thing it's really missing. Yeah, getting cooling, but this, otherwise you need ventilation.
Unless you're reading that.
I don't think so. You, you have a flat roof in, in the portion of this?
I guess he's, he's managing it by, the reason for it is.
Keep it as low, low profile as possible. No, I got, I got no problem with it.
Actually, this is strong enough to withstand.
Building official will, will certainly look at that, uh, building.
Some, somebody's stamping that.
What about noise? Is there any concern of noise?
There wasn't there's now, I guess you. That we've actually heard previously from the owner back there, that everybody's in those apartments knows what we're getting.
So when locked by the street, on the streets, it's noisy.
It's noisy from everybody else.
I mean, I don't, it seems like it would make it worse.
Well, I guess it's only people living. But maybe they're all.
Really, in fact, they're, they have music out there. It's, it's in the back. It's not going to be covered. So.
Unusual situation.
Is there trash and like that kind of stuff?
Will that was existing to remain and I believe.
It's not going to be any different. Doesn't seem like it's.
Hours of operation be the same as the rest of the restaurant?
Do we need to say that? No, I mean, the hours of operation for, for the restaurant itself, I mean, you don't have anything. Right, exactly. The patio, the outside patio that is not covered by this whatever season room. Um, it's still what's in the zoning regulations, seven in the morning. Exactly, exactly.
That raises a question that, that, when it was a patio, we did have a roof section.
Right, when it was just open in a patio.
Okay, so this actually extends the hours of operation for that.
For that small portion of the patio. There's still patio outside, yeah.
Anyone have any other question?
Anyone have any other question? Do we have a proposed motion? Does any, anybody have any issues? Okay, so I'll make a motion and. For Friar Tuck's Tavern Three Season Room, Twelve Water Street. Motion to approve S I T twenty-three oh seven Friar Tuck's Tavern Three Season Room, Twelve Water Street. To construct a twenty-four foot by twenty-one foot three season room on an existing patio with the following modifications. One, the owner shall continue to participate in a parking validation program. Signs shall be posted at the entrances, cash registers, menus, and at all outdoor seating areas to notify customers of participation in the parking. Validation program. Evidence of participation must be submitted. With the site plan application. Invited annually provided to the office of Planning and Development Services. Two technical items engraved by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second by night. Does anyone have any concerns with the motion? During that, then we'll vote on. On the motion for Friar Tuck's Tavern Three Season Room, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Any extensions? Motion is cleared unanimously. Next, we have S I T twenty-three oh five Retail Cannabis Seven Twenty-One Long Hill Road.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We got plans. We got a line, are those lined up?
Uh, my name is Andrew Moore, and I'm an attorney representing the applicant of Botanic Jack LLC. Joining me tonight is our project engineer, Susan Markort, and we also have John Hendel, who's principal of Botanic Jack LLC. Just to give you a brief overview of why we're here tonight, um, we're, we're seeking site plan approval to operate. Cannabis retail establishment at seven-two-one Long Hill Road. Uh Botanic Jack LLC has a provisional license. From the state of Connecticut to operate as an adult-use cannabis retailer. And uh. Under, under gen stats twenty-one A dash four twenty R, what our license allows us to do. Is buy cannabis from a licensed cultivator or a, a food and beverage manufacturer. And sell it direct to consumers, and that's precisely what we're seeking approval to do. A little bit about the, the property in general, seventy-one Long Hill Road. Um it's located really within the heart of the MTC mixed-use town center zone. Uh there's lots of businesses nearby, uh restaurants, fast food places. Um and it's right where Route One, it's at the intersection, actually, where Route One connects with Jurassic Drive. Uh the property is currently improved with a, a one-story fourteen, approximately fourteen thousand square foot building. Uh and that building has been historically used for retail purposes. Uh it was originally constructed. Produced as a furniture retail outlet. Then, next, it was used by O'Reilly Auto Parts to, to sell car parts. In a few years back, this commission approved a change in. Um approximately three thousand square feet of the building. From retail to indoor recreation. So what we are proposing tonight specifically is to change three thousand eight hundred ninety square feet. Of that building's total footprint. Uh to the retail space that we're going to operate the, the cannabis retail establishment. Uh we're not proposing any physical improvements besides a few minor landscaping. Additions that my, my colleague Susan Markport will, will discuss. And to talk about, you know, how we conform with the, the town's recently enacted cannabis regulations. As I mentioned, the property is located in the MTC district. Um cannabis retailers fall under the general retail use in the block regulations. For the table on section four dash eleven. Uh cannabis retail establishments are permitted with, with conditions in the MTC district. And there's a, there's five conditions in the, in the regulations. I was just planning on going through each of them and describing how we comply. So the first one, and I'm going to paraphrase a little bit, so bear with me. Uh the first condition we have to satisfy is the distance between establishments, cannabis establishments. And it says that uh. I'm, I'm at, I'm at section five point one dash fifteen point A. Right, no building shall be permitted for adult use cannabis use, the law upon which said building is located within fifteen hundred feet from any. Other cannabis establishment. Uh we satisfy this, um it's my understanding that Pure Leaf was the only one to beat us to the punch here and there approximately. One point five miles away, so we satisfy uh the first condition. Condition two. Uh which is distance from protected uses. So that no building. Shall be permitted for adult use cannabis. In the law upon which said building or premises located is within fifteen hundred feet from any lot which are protected uses located. Some of those protected uses are, are things like um elementary school, secondary schools, places of worship, charitable institutions, hospitals. Et cetera. If you look at C two. Pull that up, um on our plan, and uh I believe it's sheet C dash two. Uh we provided a, a drawing demonstrating. Um how there are no protected uses within that fifteen hundred feet. But for um. There is a school. But it's on the other side of an active railway. And per the regulations, that serves as a permanent buffer allowing our, our use. So um. My, my colleague can speak to this more, but this data was gathered from the town, the town's G I S system, so. Uh we satisfy the, the second condition. Uh the third condition, the security plan. It's, it's a written security plan to prevent and detect diversion, theft or loss of cannabis acceptable to and approved by the town of Groton Chief of Police shall be submitted with the application. Uh we did that. Um we're happy that the chief of police approved our security plan. On April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh detectives Kyle LaBriory and Jesse Kommo met with our security consultant. Reviewed the security plan. And ultimately, uh Chief Louis Pasaro. Approved our security plan, I believe that was May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. So we also satisfy that condition. The fourth out of the five conditions, um permit issuance. States that knows their own zoning permit shall be issued uh to any applicant granted a permit or special permit under the section. Till certified copy of a corresponding cannabis retailer. Permit issued by the state to the applicant, it's filed with the application for the zoning permit. So what our plan is here is to, uh hopefully, once we obtain our, our zoning approval. Is to take our provisional license and perfect it with the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut, per the, uh the statute governing. Cannabis retail establishments, the, the state will not issue a final license. To a business until it has its final zoning approval. So our plan here tonight is to submit our provisional to you and, and hopefully obtain that final zoning approval. And the fifth condition, last but not least. Only applies to medical marijuana facilities and um. That does not apply to us. So um. I'm going to invite my, my colleague, uh Susan Markport, to discuss a little bit more about the improvements proposed for the landscaping. Um and a little bit more about how our site plan complies with the, the general site plan objectives outlined in section nine point five. So I'll.
All right, um, good evening, Susan Marquardt, professional engineer with Larrero Engineering. Um as we discussed, this property has had many different um site plan approvals, um administrative site plan approvals over the years. And basically, everything you see. On the plan before you in regards to the, the parking, um the pavement and everything reflects what is there currently. Um that was um constructed per the previous site plan approval. So. In regards to parking, currently, we have fifty-one parking spaces. Forty-one is what is um required for the uses in the building, which currently. There is, O'Reilly's is already um open in the one end of the building. The middle part of the building will be the cannabis retail. And then nothing is in the northern end of the building currently, there wasn't a administrative site plan approval for um indoor recreation, but currently nothing is there now. So we meet the parking requirements in regards to landscaping. Um this plan was um some landscaping that was um previously approved with some modifications. And most all of it has been installed, except we did add um. A little bit additional landscaping in the two islands, um which was um staff comment, so. That um will be installed. Soon, as far as the building lights and site lighting. That was um per the original approved plan, all of that has been installed. Um everything is full cutoff, so it meets the zoning requirements um for lighting. And that's basically um it, so like I was mentioning, nothing else really improvements to the site. Um sidewalks have already been installed, the um. Accessibility parking and ramps and everything that was per the original site plan has been uh installed. No additional utilities or anything will be required. Um for this change in use. We do have a detail for the sign out in front, there was modification to the existing sign. Which has already happened, the um, the top part is O'Reilly's, and then there's two spots below it, uh one will be for this use and one will be for. Whatever will go in the other end of the building in the future.
If I could, yeah, just one more thing be- before we wrap up. I think it's really important to point out that this is a. We might be one of the first cannabis retailers, just pure retailers in Groton, but I can't think of a better place to put this use. If you look at, um, you know, the policy behind the MTC district. Uh section three point three, your regulations. The very purpose is to accommodate a very wide variety of uses at different scales. So while we are a, uh, you know, somewhat new news, uh. And when you look at the great access the site has, having um. Right, located right off of a, a Route One, serviced by traffic lights. Um in a zone that's encouraging a wide variety of uses. Uh it, it really is a great application, so um we welcome questions. Uh but at the end, ultimately, I, I don't. We would greatly appreciate your input also.
Um I think they did an excellent job in summarizing, actually, um this project. Is come, going into an existing. Built-out facility, um and the only change that I, as they pointed out, is that we. Asked them to put a little bit more shrubs in the interior landscape islands. Um they already had met the landscape requirements, so this is over and up. And I have a motion for you, it's probably the shortest motion you've ever seen. No technical items on this.
We never have. We always put it on there.
I'll let Deb handle that one. We do, we do, but and then that's what we did with um the Curaleaf one, which caused a good week of back and forth with the state. Because that was on there. Um they said, well, they haven't completed, they, they don't have your complete approval yet. Um and there were no technical items, so, so we don't anticipate any with this one. Um but if you do have any, then we'll add it to the motion.
We'll make sure we think.
Okay.
I have no problem, I mean, this location is among the ones that we were probably targeting. I put this together, I wish it was, honestly, I wish it was a little less prominent, we can be the first one there, but. Oh, well, and as you say, O'Reilly's is going to, as a big print, and you know, it's a little bit, so I think that's fun. We had a little technical item, just because it's in your presentation here. That's what we're doing, lighting. Uh adding some sconces? In, in the drawing, there's, there's a, a sconce.
Uh the lighting is already on the buildings.
Yeah.
On the building, around the building, and it's already in the parking lot, so there's no proposed lighting.
Oh, okay. The package shares, I just wondered.
You have four or five pages, eight issues.
Yes. Gotcha.
There's actually one version of the lights that you, that isn't quite. You say it's already there. Good job. Right? This is the, just the building, the, the retail use that's challenging. Does this affect the parking lot in any way? Parking.
They need all parking apartments.
And does this require the E V parking?
It's not new construction, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's what I kind of thought you were going to say, is there connection between this and the gas station?
Yes.
That's what there is there, because I see the stop sign there, I just. I was in O'Reilly's today, so. I didn't notice it, but, and I wasn't there for this, I was there for brake lights, so.
Yeah, right here, there is, there's an existing connection to the gas station, and also per the previous um site plan approval, there was a connection that was. Yeah, that was put in.
Years, no other questions. Thank you.
Um hours of operation? Um have we, so, I don't. I, I believe the Department of, you have to forgive me, I believe the Department of Consumer Protection publishes the guidelines. That have the force and effect of any other state agency's regulations. Do set forth restrictions on our hours of operations. I do not know them off the top of my head, I, I do apologize, but I do believe the state regulates that.
I'm. Under that understanding, I don't.
Well. I don't think this place should be open twenty-seven.
You know what?
Well, we had hours for the other ones. They were afraid, they weren't.
No, they were not, they, they were closing at nine, I think.
Well, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's not something that's required by your regulations, um I, I just don't know that the state requires for.
As I control. Zoom something and then make it more liberal or. You know, we're doing is saying the use.
I, I do want to, want to highlight just one thing that this. The way the statutes are written, the, the uses is heavily regulated by the state, and I know my, my clients have invested a, you know, a, a fair amount of money into this, so. I, I can assure you, they're, they're dedicated to complying with all the D C P guidance and regulations, and. Once we get closer towards that, that opening phase, there'll definitely be something that is, is hammered out, because as I said. Uh a, a revocation of that license by the state is definitely not something we, we would ever be uh itching for, so. If, if that's any assurance in the absence of, you not knowing exactly when the, the time ends.
Okay, yeah, it's not something that I'm, you know, going to hold up the site plan for, but it was just curiosity and. So I'm looking at three different. Okay. All right. And then, um, this main gazenta goes out, uh, is at the traffic light.
Yeah.
Okay, so all that traffic, because I heard. Because I heard from a friend, when you go to these places, it could be pretty traffic, like, you know, traffic intensive, so. That's it.
An opening, it's like nine o'clock.
Yeah.
So nine to eight. Do we put hours on this?
None of its control. It's a state, a state. I think the state's controlling.
Regulation is a little lengthy for me to dig through right now.
I'm comfortable with that. It's actually within the building. It's that, so you got on the right hand side, that's your entry check in, that's gonna be. Some strange things. Front door opens out. Inner door opens in, which means that it doesn't work as an exit. So. Just offhand, I don't, I don't think that's right, so. Just because I saw it, I have something about, you know, there's nothing to explain. For your entry checking. It's the door that opens in.
I'm not sure I, I understand the question, are you saying it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't allow egress from the building?
You got it. You, you have to exit, the exit where you came in mostly, and that's opening the wrong way, so don't put that one in there.
Well, there, there. There is an exit.
It's on the other side.
Right on the other side.
That one, but I don't know how, we need to exit from this place and. Whether the fire marshal will.
There's.
Fire marshal, have no other comments.
Yeah, that's, might have, like, honestly, might have missed that, because it's one of those things that. You're gonna wanna, there's a fire, you're blind, and you're gonna wanna run out the way you came in. Or it's got no building, but anywhere in town, but you can't run out, because you came in.
I, I, I. Uh, I see that there's, there are two exits, um, it's, it's generally a small retail space.
Yes, one, the other one's got to be in the back someplace, which means you have to go in, in, back of the counter, or they'll be locked.
So, is, I mean, the, the, one thing I will say is there's heavy security restrictions on these things, at least for the purposes of this entry check in point. Um.
Well, I, I get the check in point, they're saying the door opens the wrong way. It should open, that you both open in. Or in fact, be, you know, if it's a sliding door, then a sliding door would actually break away to go in, as in every other commercial place.
So maybe we, we, I, I understand your comments, I mean.
We, we. Bring that up, I'll, I'll actually could check the call tone, bring that up with the fireman, see if he noticed that particular thing. Okay. Yeah, and the other part, let's go to your heavy security. Is that on the other side, that's where your exit is, so you did this two part thing for entry check in. For exit, people just walk out that back door, right? Which means that somebody walking out the back door.
I believe, well, well, there's, there is security inside of the, of that, that general display. Of, of the general area where people will be in. So, I mean, it's. There, there's two, two factor of, like, you have to present your ID when you get in. You know, and then you have to go through another set of door, and then you present ID when you get in there. And then you finally, once you made your purchase, you get to. You have to exit.
Okay, they're saying this entry check in thing isn't as much security, it's just validating that you've got customers who are allowed to buy.
More or less, yes, I'd say that's fair.
And so someone snuck in, like, getting something, okay, here you go, you're good, you get a ticket or something like that?
Uh, you, you, you're, you present your ID, um. The, the, the business or we would verify that the user is twenty one years old, which is. And this, this absolute must is required, um. That's, that's.
Okay, I, I, I think. Bad eighteen year olds trying to sneak in, and I see an open door to sneak in, just hang out there, wait for somebody to leave. Going, I've got an ID.
No, so.
His ID and I've got it.
But that's, that's fair, but the, the staff. The staff is required, they are required to check IDs again, so they present their ID at the check in. And then when they make the purchase, the, the ID again, so I, it is, when I say the state has. Has uh, heard these types of concerns, I, I can assure you, and that there are. Security guidelines in place.
Okay, I mean, you've got the, the, the super check in on one side, and there's a hole on the other side, so I just wanted.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
If in fact, you need to check IDs again, and that's a requirement.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, you know, the, the, the state wanted to make sure, I, again. They heard comments of people fearing that underage kids would get in, so that's why we have that two factor. ID checking.
None of that.
No, we're happy to, we're happy to answer your questions the best as we can. Best as we can.
Anybody have anything?
Literally.
Can we add that um, thing about the door?
That's a building code, that's, the building department will handle that. And we'll make sure.
Nothing.
Just so it doesn't get forgotten. We all know the um. What was it, Rhode Island? I think they had a problem with their doors. We've had that forever. All right. So I'll make the simple more, a motion, cannabis retailers, seven twenty one long road. Motion to approve site plan twenty three oh five cannabis retailer. Seven twenty one long road. Is there a second? So anyone have any concerns with them? Motion for site plan twenty three oh five, all those and say, I. They opposed the extensions, motion is carried.
Thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it.
Full on, no business, no applications.
If none.
Referrals we had most. Reported chair. I have nothing. Reported commission, does anyone? I, if somebody could just give me a two minute summary of what happened in the last meeting, um, about our lawsuit. There is no lawsuit.
Oh, that isn't our lawsuit, I don't even think they were mentioning.
Yes, well, we're mentioned. Along with fifty other people.
Yes, except, okay. I've read the whole, all three things. And so we're met, the town mentioned, but not that weird. You are part of the group that's attached to people.
Yeah, the mention of the thirty billion dollars, I have to search for that one. Which you mentioned twice, which is supposed to be big and scary.
Yeah, but that's thirty billion. That's what happens when you write it in the bar.
Right, yeah, so. And it was thirty.
Lot of money.
Okay.
All thirty billion was.
Watch our.
Was the, was the plaintiffs. Assumed value of the entire industry in the entire region. That's what thirty one bucks, not suing anybody, there's not that much risk, there's nothing like it. That's, that's the number that they decided was the entire value of the entire region, the entire industry.
But there has been no appeal of the decision from the last meeting. Adds to this thing.
If you list it, went to the end of a hundred pages and listed all the people. Okay, so, town of Groton is.
There was, there was not really. There was a place where the mansion.
Yeah, but mansion is definitely.
Well, it's mentioned as a particular kind. Unincentred, in fact, it was, it was called, I didn't look up the Chinese, which means that town of Groton. Had a contractual relationship of some kind with the people who were doing this. That's it, so it means that maybe that he gets some money out of the town if they win their suit, but not, not in the center.
But the agreement with the town was just like tax purposes, right?
Actually saying.
Absolutely.
Paying a little taxes.
It was.
Nothing else.
I would say wait and see.
So after a lot of expensive lawyers get paid and everything, this is nothing, right?
And nothing for this commission of any, that's all. And your decision, as I said, at this point has not been appealed, you are still, we're still within the appeal period. But as a breakdown, how long is it? Fifteen days from date of publication.
Oh, and we're. Proved on fifteenth of. With the base.
Right, the fact that it'll become a fact, well, it's Friday.
So that would be the thing.
No, no, the, so. Typically, what we do, you all meet on a Tuesday, we publish the legal ads on Friday. Um, so it's fifteen days from that Friday, is the appeal period.
I do have another item. The property reuse committee.
Oh, I'm gonna ask about that.
Oh, I can go, well. And so, in the end, we, town council just decided to. Reject everything that you, you need to give. Entire reuse committee's plan, in fact, at the end, was. Not a decision making body in any way, it was just putting a body that would help them make a report. They decided that is. For whatever reason, you really didn't understand it, or they just didn't want another body. Just. Your report introduction. We are.
So are we on that committee?
Yes, I will.
Okay, how many people are on?
Well, they're all, it's active people, seven people, but the committee that was going to be is, I call it a super committee. Which would be someone from every commission, every committee would come in and weigh in on. And then bring it to everybody, and then come back and later report, that was the whole thing. I made a study, it's too many people, it's too hard, it's too scary for the.
Thank you, though, Al.
You're welcome.
Nothing to report.
Um, I just have, if you all were sent a notice of a, a hearing next, a hearing, a meeting next week, discussing the. Issues with heat and deal with the public health, with the climate change. Next Tuesday, five to five thirty. It was interesting, there was a paper, um, in New York Times, it was all very close, about Chicago. Now, the underground of buildings is now really changing what they need. Creating all these other problems, it's really worth while, it's like the new climate, all things are in your brain. Yeah, New York's.
California's breaking in hands. Did you see those landslides?
So we have. I assume you have no comments on the kind.
That, that's right.
Why'd you even put that?
Well, it went to all the commissions, so. I know we have, we have someone who's, who goes to those meetings.
The last one. I'm an officer. Yeah, once you, once you get elected, you're polite. No, he was, and he was the chairman of our city. And so we have a application update and. A S P. Anything else, so, anybody have anything else? So entertain a motion for a general. You some moved? Moves, is there a second? It's all downhill.